I am now going to open the meeting. March 21st, zoning board of appeals. It is 7:38 PM. And we are going to move agenda item four to the front of the agenda. So, we may... Excuse me?
The speakers work? Or is that just for the TV?
That's just for the TV, so. All right, first of all, we are moving the agenda item up number four, the Simmons Hills LLC. And what I do want to say before I open that hearing is, we, obviously, the town underestimated the number of folks that would be here tonight. We made an accommodation to extend the meeting room in the children's library. As I was walking out, I was told by a number of folks that people had been turned away.
Yeah.
So, unfortunate... Well, I can't do anything about the parking, I'm sorry. But unfortunately, once we find out people have been turned away, if we were to continue with anything other than opening the meeting, we would be in violation of Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. Because of that, what we are going to do is I am going to open the meeting because the town is obligated to do that within a certain timeframe, or else the town is at a disadvantage and has to automatically approve, in a nutshell, the project, which I don't think anybody in this room wants to automatically happen without having to hear what you have to say, and the town doing their due diligence. So, in that vein, what we are going to do, and just follow me here for a little bit, we're going to ask the developer to continue the meeting. They have agreed they will do that. We cannot pick an arbitrary date and say we're just going to continue it to whenever. It's very specific. In town council, please correct me if I'm wrong, we need a date, specific time, and location. So, obviously, we will coordinate with the schools to have this hearing held at the high school, or the middle school, or one of the auditoriums, or cafeteria, wherever they can accommodate us. But, I can't... I guess I could call the superintendent tonight, but I'm sure he does not have his schedule readily available at 7:30 at night. We're going to have to coordinate with them. So, I do not know the dates that they are available at this point. So, the exercise will be, we will continue to our next scheduled meeting, which is in April. Kathy, what date is that?
25th.
April 25th. Now, keep in mind, I'm not telling anybody not to come to the meeting, but all we literally will be doing at that meeting, and we will confirm that with the developer when we ask them if they're fine continuing, is setting the date, and the location, and the time of this next meeting. So, if you show up at the next meeting, you're more than welcome to, but it's literally going to be just to set the date and time. We will publicize it on the town website. We will... You're welcome to come down to town hall. We will make sure the word gets out there. I'm sure the word will get out there amongst yourselves anyway. So, that's the process at this point. So, I... Let me do this first, and then I will...
Well, while you were doing that, you just quoted that the law requires meetings to be held in a certain timeframe. Exactly to the date, how much time do we have to have this meeting? I think it's a fair and reasonable question.
Ma'am, let me open the meeting hearing first.
I need two spots, thank you.
Okay. For the record, the Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Massachusetts general laws, Chapter 40B as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, March 21st, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Lakeville Public Library at 4 Precinct Street, upon the petition of Simmons Hills LLC for a comprehensive permit pursuant to Massachusetts general law, Chapter 40B, to construct 200 units with 44 units to consist of single-family homes, 46 duplex cottage catering to older demographics, and 1110-unit condominium buildings, of which no less than 50 of such units shall be restricted as affordable for low or moderate income persons or families as required under the terms applicable to state regulations and guidelines. The project is located off of Free Town Street and comprised of six separate Lakeville Assessor Parcels map 34 Block 2, lots 1 to 1112, map 35 Block 1, lots 2A, and 4. All the information was available to be viewed at the planning department by appointment. Okay, at this point...
We, the people, do not want this.
At this point, I am going to ask the petitioner if they would like to ask for a continuance.
Mr. Chairman, Paul Cusson, Daltick Associates.
Yes, sir.
Speaking of developer, we would like, we agree to extend the...
To continue the hearing until April 25th?
Until April 25th.
Okay.
And at that time, my understanding is that you will decide at that time for a subsequent meeting that we can be heard in full in May.
So, let me clarify this, just to make sure we're all on the same page. You'd like to continue this hearing until April 25th at our next regularly scheduled zoning board meeting to strictly and only set a date for the hearing to continue in May?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Is the developer also the owner of the land?
Yes.
Or is he a separate entity?
We can't talk anything about this other than continue it, so, council...
Mr. Chairman, will they be extending the 180 days also, or just continuing?
We prefer not to do that this time, as for 180-day extension is required at some point in time, we'd love to discuss it and would agree at that time.
You shouldn't have to wait too long.
The pressure on it.
Okay, does anybody want to entertain a motion to continue the hearing?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Jerry's made a motion to continue. Chris Campbell has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. This is continued until April 25th. Thank you.
What about the 180 days?
Yes.
Is it going to be locked at 180 days? If we want to extend this, we should extend 180 days, right?
We've just continued it. We can't talk anything about it.
No, that's not the answer. That is a very specific question that you declined to answer. But where are we given 180 days and it's poured down our throats? When does that clock tick?
It should be as of tonight.
Do you want to answer it?
Sure.
But it shouldn't be as of tonight, because you people pour this.
Let me defer it. Excuse me.
Your confidence does not allow emergency.
Town Council, can you reply to the 180-day question, please? This is Amy Questle. She's Lakeville's town council.
Sure, Sue. Once the hearing is opened, which the hearing was opened, there is 180 days for this board to act. That 180 days is September 17th of 2024. Now, they requested a continuance for approximately 30 days. We specifically asked if they would be extending the 180 days, that the same amount of time, which is somewhat common, but not always, and it is their choice. And Mr. Cusson clearly said that he would not be extending the 180 days at this time.
So, when is that?
There is nothing that we could do.
Yes, it's happening right now.
So, Mr. Chairman, the other thing that I would point out to you is that, as you stated, but just to clarify, if this board did not open this hearing tonight, you only have, when the application is filed with the town clerk, you only have 30 days to open it. If you do not open it, you are subject to constructive approval, which means that the project would be approved as it was filed with the town clerk. And anyone that has been on a 40B before knows that throughout the 180 days, the project does change. It evolves, and we try and get a better project. So, that would not be a very good outcome. So, we really had no choice but to open it tonight.
So, let me... Because I'm a simple person, so let me simplify this. If we had said no, which I think is what a lot of folks wanted us to do out there, they walk out and do whatever they want.
Correct.
Okay.
On the 31st day, they file a notice of constructive approval with the Housing Appeals Committee, and they get the project that they applied for.
Okay. So, we said no. You guys have a bigger problem on your hands. You're not even going to get your day to speak. And I will tell you this, everyone is going to have a chance and an opportunity to speak up, tell us what you do like, tell us what you don't like.
Did we notify the whole town, as opposed to just the whole?
Why was only five houses on Free Town Street notified?
Did we notify, like, the whole town?
I have a vested interest, and I wasn't notified. I wasn't the town boss.
Yeah, exactly. Free Town Street, I found out Monday, 10:00 AM, on Lakeville, like a Gola. That's the biggest BS I ever heard.
Absolutely.
BS.
I mean, it almost feels like us residents, that you guys try to squeeze play with a nasty developer that overpaid for land.
Yeah.
I don't know. Try to make that image go away.
And if the school can't handle it either.
The schools get, the roads get, houses...
Trust me, folks, folks, you're going to have an opportunity to say all of this, so...
The overpaying for land is hard. Put that off on us.
All right. We're going to have to continue with our next hearing. Folks, trust me, if I start talking questions...
I want everybody on Free Town Street notified. That's a fair question. Answer it.
If I start taking questions, it's going to upset the apple cart here, folks. No. If you stick around, you can ask me whatever you want after the hearing. If you stick around, you can ask me whatever you want after this, okay?
Kathy, if you want to send me the letter notices, I'm sorry. If you want to send me the order list, I'll check. I'm going to put that to them for the next hearing.
All right, I think you guys are right, everybody. We need to blow our zoning board out, because clearly they don't represent us.
Can I just make a point to that?
Hey, whoa, 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 Jerry. Jerry, don't engage it, so we're going to be here forever.
We're appointed, not elected.
You hear my voice, I can't answer yours.
I'm going to get a certified letter of all this meeting, go find him, second hand. I'm in the butter.
We are appointed.
Tell me, I can't hear you. So, why are you making it so loud in here? Everybody clearly hear me.
This board is appointed. We are not elected.
Oh, good. So, hold your ass up.
You're welcome to join the board. Okay, you're welcome to join the board.
Yes, I'll wait. I'll join right now.
You can put... You have to file a letter, write a letter to the select board.
Because this was scummy, what you guys did. It was scummy.
Relax. You have to relax.
No, I don't have to. It's not... Do you live on Free Town Street?
I live in the neighborhood, yes.
Do you live on Free Town Street?
No, I do not.
Will your house become Chernobyl when that 55,000 gallon per day sources leaks?
I get it.
No, you don't, because you allow them to even submit.
That's the right...
Very, you say it's mine, very dangerous. I have to get constantly, Free Town, on my back.
But we're appointed, we're elected. Is that why?
We're appointed, you know?
The select board.
Oh, that's...
The new applicants come before the zoning board, and then we all appoint them. But when it comes to the next meeting, the town in a nice, calm, and approachable tone, right? So, we do have questions.
This is really calm. You have not seen what's at yet. Ask, notified by there. You tell me that's not a sleaze play.
I'm getting letters on my mailbox, last nation, other people saying, "You're going to me." I say, "I didn't know that." I want a house to be, I want a section of the house to be, you know, that's wrong.
How many other houses? I'm glad you find it difficult. I don't find having my property out in my environment, my home, like destroyed.
I agree. Just because we're here on this floor does not mean you're voting for or against this.
I'm part of what you're getting at, yes.
That will destroy the...
I would agree with you. I can guarantee you that the people sitting here on this board are not in charge of what is going to let us go.
Impact to you, you as a whole board, the impact to the schools, the impact to public services, it's all going to get discussed.
It's scary, there's a few, right?
Come to the next meeting.
It's little talk. If it gets far, it's little talk.
Come to the next meeting, no? Come to the next meeting. Well, that's just a kick. Next meeting down. The real meeting is today.
Do you give that a hint around here that nobody trusts you?
Why?
Town members, we know what other town's elected members have done by law, it's a fall.
You really don't know us?
Don't care. The town is scumbags. Scumbags, scumbags, scumbags.
No, no, I don't care.
Okay, we have other agenda items we have to get to, so...
We don't want to let you, don't... Don't pay you.
We can go into a second session.
Oh, good, so we...
We have a couple applicants we have to hear. Can you just kind of look aside? We'll see you in April.
You might see me every day in your house?
Well, don't do that.
Why?
You're more than welcome. You want a cup of coffee with me? Sure. Thank you. You want to call the next one?
Huh?
Ask me if I'm married, is that?
No, I was waiting. I needed to clear it out a little bit, so... All right. I swear, Peter, I have a question for you. I'm through. One question, don't...
I talked to the PD, yeah, I talked to PD, and he was the other side. And they mentioned to me that if you have any wetlands concerns, you have a 10-day window to expire, like, a second. And my question is, does that 10 days start now, or when?
It would be of the ruling, to my knowledge, is that correct? It would be from the ruling. So, whenever the board makes a ruling, a decision, yay, you then have the 10 days from that ruling to file the appeal. Yeah, so, we don't give a consideration of law, like you said.
They're talking about the conservation pushing for the conditions.
Okay, yeah.
I don't think, have they gone to Concom?
Wetlands protection.
They haven't even gone to Concom yet.
I don't think they have gone to Concom yet.
Yeah, it's all outside of my... I don't... I'm trying to understand, but...
Yeah. There's a lot of moving parts to this, a lot. It has to go through multiple boards, and she's right. When it goes conservation, if they approve it, you can better see it.
And that'll be...
Sorry, hold on. Get this. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to start our next hearing. Okay, the zoning board of appeals, acting in accordance with general laws, Chapter 40A as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, March 21st, 2024, 7:00 PM, at the Lakeville Public Library, 4 Precinct Street, upon the petition of Julia Dixon. Special permit is requested under Section 276.1C and Section 277.4A, to construct a proposed addition of 133 square feet to extend the reception area of a pre-existing nonperforming lot as provided by the Lakeville Bylaws. Property is 36 Main Street. Application and assorted documents are available at the planning department by appointment. So, Julia, how are you?
Good. How's your job?
I'm good. You're going to have to speak up in order to make sure we can hear you. Quiet!
Shut your mouth! Shut the fuck up! Watch your mouth!
All right, Julia. Go to the party and tell us what you're doing, and then I'll read some stuff into the record.
So, we are proposing to put a very small addition.
Actually, Julia, come up here. Right here.
We're proposing, Pet Rezess, to put a small addition on our reception area to make it safer and more accommodating for dogs. Currently, we have one door that goes in and one door that goes out. We have clients who are not particularly clever about their dogs, and sometimes the dog have to pass in close proximity, which can cause issues. So, what we're proposing is to actually extend, I think it's 133 square feet, so we have an indoor and an outdoor. And that way, the dogs don't need to pass in the middle. It's going to be on a slab. Right now, there's a flower bed there that looks pretty ugly, and we just would like to make it more efficient and safer.
Thank you. You're not doing a very good job at it anyway, Julia, so...
I know, really.
Okay, I'm going to read a couple things into the record. We have a letter from the Board of Health dated February 28th. Board of Health received petition for the hearing for 36 Main Street, the proposed extension. Other reception area would not result in an increased flooded septic system, and the footprint of the addition does not affect the existing septic system. Therefore, the board has no objections to the proposed addition. We also have a memo from the planning board, March 15th. At their meeting, the planning board reviewed the above referenced petition for the hearing for the Board of Appeals. Board has no comments. You told us what you're doing. We actually have the plans from Zenith Consulting that we've reviewed. Of course, I just shut it down, but that's all right. I finished looking what I needed to. Do we have any comments or questions from any of the board members?
I also would just like to point out that this will not in any way affect the capacity that we currently have, because that will be a question that will come to you shortly, I'm sure.
Okay. Well, for the record, no more dogs than you already have.
Yep, correct.
Okay. Do we have any comments from anybody in the board?
This is a gentleman that will do the quick...
All right, so, let me summarize it for you. We have a petition, and I apologize, you couldn't hear anything up front. We have a little background noise to understate that. Need that back on me now. Okay, so now we can go back to our regular volumes. Petition to basically extend the reception area, which is going to be on a slab, and it's going to go over an existing flower bed. No additional dogs, no additional capacity. It's only going to affect that flower bed area, which it shows on the plans. The Board of Health had no issues with it, and the planning board didn't make any comments. And we're at the point now where I'm asking the board if they have any comments or questions, and then, as you know, I'm going to ask the audience if they have any questions. So, my board, do we have any questions?
Not at all.
Okay, now it's public comment time, and if you want to make a comment, Danny, come on up, announce your name and your address, and comment away.
Daniel Ferreira, one Patrick Thomas block, by the little behind, dog kennel. I have to oppose it, just because, you know, I opposed the last addition. I expressed my concerns with it. The traffic has gotten worse, the parking's gotten worse, the dogs have increased. I don't know what the numbers are. I've tried to check with the town. They can't tell me how many dogs are there during the day. They can't tell me how many overnight. So, when they say they won't increase, there's no one policing it. There's one inspection from the state as a dog kennel, which has nothing to do with dog numbers. They've outgrown the place where they're at right now. They're parking at Baldi's because they stopped parking down Patrick Thomas. They've gotten a letter from the state saying they're not supposed to be using Patrick Thomas whatsoever. The last addition was approved with parking out there, which they can't use. They're over capacity. As a neighbor, that, you know, this is where I live, it's not a detrimental thing that they need. That's the wording that you used on the last approval. I just don't see the need for it. When there's, you know, it's nonconforming now. It was nonconforming before the last addition. It'll be less conforming after this one. I just disagree with it.
The only comment I'll make is, I empathize with what you're saying. Unfortunately, a lot of the points you're bringing up, and you and I have talked anyways about this before, you know, when it comes to enforcement in certain aspects, we don't have any control over monitoring or enforcement or anything like that.
But you have control over what they do in the future. So, if it's already a problem within a butter, that's one of the most important things that you guys have always, has always, you know, heard as a butters, they want to hear the concerns. Given your concerns, this is affecting my home.
Will this new addition affect it?
Yes, because it's that much less space for them to use as parking, as everything that they would need for their use.
Okay, no, that's... You've got the opportunity to speak to us. We'll take those comments and look at the plans, and the board can make their decision at that point. Thanks. If you'd like to make comments, yes, you can.
I'd just like to add that, number one, you bought that property, we've...
Julia, 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 you speak there.
Oh, sorry.
But you talk to us.
Pet Rezess was in the property, there before Mr. Ferreira bought the property. Unfortunately, he has a deed to use the accessway that is state-owned. For many, many years, that access road has been allowed, we've been allowed to use it, because actually, it's the only access I have to the rear of the property. And the town requested that we use that for parking. But Mr. Ferreira got in touch with the state and told them that he didn't want us using it for parking, so we are not allowed to have access. We have offered to pave it. The access that we require for parking will be at 6:30 in the morning when the staff arrive, at noon time when they leave for the shift change, at 2:00 when they come in in the afternoon, and at 7:00 in the evening when the staff leave. That's four accesses a day. That's it. It will not cause any obstruction to his right of way and all the construction vehicles that he uses to go up and down that road. And I have had a message from the town, from the state, not to use it, and we have said that we won't do that. So, I approached Baldi and said, "This is the situation we're in. He's in a similar situation, because the state, the property goes onto his land also, and he has agreed very kindly to allow us to park on his property, so that we do not mess up our parking out the front." I would like to point out that the parking out front will not be affected by the new addition. That is a flower bed. It's not a parking spot. It will not take any space. It's at the front of the property. Mr. Ferreira's property is way out back, so it's not going to make any difference to him whatsoever. He has done nothing but berate us and give us hassle about the number of dogs. We are licensed for a number of dogs, and we are inspected every year and licensed accordingly. So, it's literally another gripe to get at us again. He's not an easy neighbor to live with, and we try to abide by his rules and everything that he sets down. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Well, I can't do anything about the neighbor issue, but what I... Hang on a minute. But what I would suggest is, not that we're making, taking any action on this at this point, if we were to grant the permit, you would be okay with no decrease in parking spaces. It's not going to, it's not going to, based on the planes, it's not going to touch anything, but you would be fine saying, listen, subject to no parking spaces being taken to or affected what's...
Absolutely, no parking spaces being affected.
Okay. Because parking enforcement, again, I know you don't like me saying this, Danny, but parking enforcement has nothing to do with us, so...
Parking enforcement doesn't, but when you have a plan that expands the building, and they don't have enough room to park already, because it makes sense to approve more building for more capacity, even though there's no dogs increase, what is the number of dogs that they have?
I don't know. We don't really see that.
Exactly. So, this is the second meeting that we're adding on now, but they say, "We're not going to increase the amount of dogs," but no one can tell me how many dogs they have. I went to the... The only answer, the only answer I could get was the town clerk's office, where they said they have paid a fee to have 10 to 15 dogs overnight. I can tell you, at 7:00 in the morning, there's 60 dogs out there, and all those dogs didn't get dropped off at 7:00 in the morning.
Again, I emphasize...
Again, I understand what you're saying, but if they're not following the rules now, and no one knows how many dogs they're supposed to have, why do we keep giving them permits to add on?
We don't know if they're following the rules or not.
Okay. So, why don't we get that answered by the person who, I've gone to David Freitz, ask him the same question. Is there an after-hours inspection on how many dogs there are? And he isn't able to tell me that he's, he says he can't do it after hours inspection. So, if you're licensed for 10 to 15 dogs overnight, and no one polices it at night to know how many dogs there are, actually, because you, there's a difference between a dog daycare and a dog kennel. The kennel licenses for after-hours, for overnight. No one inspects it. They could have 100 dogs there overnight. Now that they have a big addition with all kinds of extra crates, how do you know that they're not filled with dogs?
It's one of the issues this board has on various occasions for various permits as far as what happens after the fact, and it's enforcement. Unfortunately, we are not the enforcement board, we're the appeals board. So, I wish I had a better answer for you. But again, I don't know which way the board's gonna vote on this, but unfortunately, we can't, we can't be held accountable for whether...
Okay, so we'll go back to the zoning issue. It's nonconforming. You've already, we've already had how many additions on this building? Why do we have our bylaws about zoning setbacks and land size and permability if we just keep passing them? It's not, it's not like they needed more room for a septic system or something like that. It's a convenience thing. It's not a dog safety like the last time. It's a convenience thing. It's for the business.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, are you open to answering that question about the number of dogs and what you're licensed for?
Yeah, would you like to know how many dogs?
I'd love to, yeah, yeah.
We have 100...
Julia, just...
I'm sorry, John.
That's all right. I know you're loud, but you're not loud enough for the mic to pick you up, so...
We have 100 dogs a day at daycare. The other addition that Mr. Ferreira is referring to is a nap room. The dogs take a nap from 12 to 2:00. And they all get crated. They are given food. If they, I always want them to have lunches, they're given lunches. We obviously can't mix the dogs together when there's food around. It's the time when we do shift changes, we do cleanups, that kind of thing. And we, everybody takes a downtime. Dogs are like permanent toddlers. They all need a downtime. We have 28 kennels. Sometimes two dogs from a family come in. The most dogs we have boarded is probably 35 a night. We have cameras. Wayne is my maintenance manager and kennel manager. He lives there. His house is literally a few feet away from the kennel. And we are inspected. Dave Freitz knows exactly how many dogs we have, and he sees how they're kept, and he's very happy about it. I've, we've got double fencing everywhere. I mean, you couldn't have a safer environment for your dogs. And as far as Mr. Ferreira suggesting that it's not a safety issue with the reception area, it is. One of the reasons we're doing it is for the safety of the clients and the dogs.
So, how often are you at maximum capacity?
We're at maximum capacity probably Wednesday, Thursday, Friday for daycare. The other days, Monday, Tuesday, probably, we're probably between about 75 to 85 dogs. We are staffed, we have 20 staff. And also Saturdays, we have minimal daycare, mostly for the boarding dogs, because they have to go out and play. And then on Sundays, we're closed. We have pickup time between 5:00 and 7:00. However, because there are boarding dogs there, the kennel staff are in, obviously, 365 days a year. They have to be. The dogs need to be fed, cleaned, exercised, and well cared for.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that.
Sure.
This is the only information I get on how many dogs they have.
This is the license fee. This is what she pays, so...
Based on how many dogs.
Can I just say something?
Sure.
The categories of kenneling and dogs are put into two categories. There's residential, which is up to four dogs, and there is commercial, which is up to 15 dogs. But that's what the town stipulates. They don't say, Dave Freitz knows how many dogs we have. That is just the amount. If you have that many dogs or more, that's what you pay. I've always paid my kennel license. And just as a matter of interest, when I actually bought the property, it had been a kennel for 30 years. It had never had a commercial kennel license. I had to apply to, apply to get a kennel license. It cost me $900, even though the place had been run as a commercial kennel. When I bought it, they said, "There is no kennel license." Mr. Freitz had been giving a residential license to the previous owners for all those years, and I had to get the commercial kennel license.
So, who oversees the commercial?
Sorry?
Who oversees the commercial license?
Uh, Dave Freitz.
Dave Freitz. And Dave Freitz, if we were to confirm with him that everything is...
Absolutely.
Done the right way.
Absolutely.
You don't have over-capacity issues. It's a safe haven for the dogs. So, if we were to condition, for example, this permit on Dave Freitz okaying that everything is up to snuff, you would be fine with us conditioning it.
He inspects us regularly and has no issues with it at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, sure.
Do we know what the lot coverage is on the building?
It's on the last plan, the last addition.
I don't know, ask the engineer. Jeff, do we know what the lot coverage is?
I don't have the plan in front of me, but they were down there.
Oh, so you want me to, you wanted me to show you my computer?
Yes.
Let me get to the right thing here.
35.5% existing, 36.1% with the proposed change.
Coverage?
36.1%.
Yeah, total percent right now is 35.5%, 18,098 square feet. And then with the new addition, it will be 36.1%. So, adding 0.6%. 130, yeah.
If you make a contingent upon them being compliant with the amount of dogs, she's already told you they're not. She says she's got 38 or 35 dogs, when she's licensed for 10 to 15.
My point is, Dave Freitz is the authority on whether she's operating correctly.
He won't go over after-hours and check.
He's welcome to come.
I'm gonna say, if you're gonna, if you, come on up to the, say what you just said.
I've spoken to him four times.
Yeah.
He says that he can't go with that, he can't go in there after-hours to inspect. First, first three times, he said he would, and then he said he can't. So, I said, "What is the point of granting a license for 10 to 15 dogs if no one polices it at night?"
But he's the authority, and I, if he turns around and we condition this that says if Dave Freitz says that she's operating in compliance, our hands are kinda tied at that point. I mean, it's not our curvy to say whether...
You don't have to put the condition on there. You can deny it.
Without checking with Dave first?
Treating it as a zoning issue instead of a compliance issue.
But you're saying the issue...
Treat it as a zoning issue and say, "Hey, you know what? It's already noncompliant. It's already a nonconforming issue." Say no. You don't have to, the zoning board doesn't have to approve everything because they asked for it.
You are correct. You can approve it.
When I asked for, when I asked for permission on my garage, I rewatched the video the other day. I asked for 20 feet, which is, that's the side setback, but my lots configured sideways. And then I said, "Well, can I go to 17 feet if it makes more sense for my septic setback?" And then they said, "Not only," and he said, "Only if you have to, but we'd rather go to 20 feet." Their last addition was a 40-foot setback, and they went to 16 feet, no problem. It's a commercial use. You don't have to say yes.
No. I believe this addition is no further intruding the setback than the existing front of the building anyways, correct? Yeah, so it's, yeah. Do we have any other questions? Anyone interested in making a motion? Or not?
I will make a motion to approve the special permit on the condition that the animal inspector, Mr. David Freites, does do an inspection of the premises at, overnight of the kennel. So, the condition of the special permit is upon inspection of Mr. Freites, I will make, approve the special permit based on that condition.
Do we have a second?
I take it.
Before you do that?
Do we have, the hearings, once we start talking about it, the hearings close to the public, so... Do we have any further discussion amongst the board?
My only feeling is that we're, there's a creep on lot coverage.
There's a what?
A slow creep on lot coverage. That has been an important issue on other applications here. We've been pretty good about sticking with that. We've gone past it, and we're continuing the creep beyond. So, I'm not really comfortable with that.
Lot coverage, this is commercial, right?
Yeah. Isn't it 50%?
Yeah, you're thinking residential.
Not all commercial.
All right.
Yeah.
Lot coverage with commercials, 50%.
Then we're good on the coverage.
Yeah.
Did, did we have a second on this motion?
Yes, we did. Jeff did.
I think this board, we could go for a vote, and you're welcome to vote, however, based on that condition, based on what you just said.
Yeah, but you could, you could have discussion after you have a first and a second. That's usually what prompts discussion, when you have a second. So, I think what we're trying to do is if we can, if we agree that it's commercial, so there is no creep. If you've got 50%, then you still got a lot of creeping lot to do.
Then fine, yep.
So...
Given that it's the front of the building and it's leveled with the front.
Right.
Okay, any further discussion amongst the board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. And Dan, just so you know, the only reason I could not take your question after the fact is once a motion was made and seconded... Well, no, you're gonna hear it anyways. Once a motion was made and seconded, we can't open it back up to the public.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Good luck. Kathy, what's the drill?
Would you like us to reach out to Dave Freitz, or you better do that?
We'll, we'll reach out, yeah.
We have 14 days to do the paperwork, and it'll go to the town's clerk's office. There's a 20-day appeal period. If there's no appeals, I'll contact you, pick it up.
Wait to hear from Mr. Freitz.
Okay, here you go. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Scott Joyce, you here? How you doing?
Hello.
Having fun so far? Not as much fun as we are, huh? Okay. Let me open this one. Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 48 is amended. Will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, March 21st, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in the Lakeville Public Library on Precinct Street. Upon the petition of Scott Joyce, special permit is requested under 270-6.3B and 270-7.4B, five, to construct a 200-square-foot shed within the front setback on a pre-existing nonconforming lot as provided by the bylaws. Excuse me, the property site is 51 Shore Ave. Application sorted materials are at the planning department by appointment. So, I'm gonna do this first, and then I'll let you guys talk. I'm just gonna read into the record what we have from the Board of Health. They met on the 28th. Board of Health has received the petition hearing, 51 Shore Ave, and has no objections to the proposed shed since the shed will have no connections to water or septic, and the footprint will not interfere with the existing septic. The planning board met on the 15th. At their meeting, the planning board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. Board has no comments regarding this petition. And I'm gonna let you take it away, sir. Tell us what you're doing.
Looking to build a 200-square-foot shed. The house is setback only 15 feet from the road, and we're looking to do this, it'll be about 20 feet, shed itself.
That's it. Plain and simple, huh?
Yep.
Wish they all liked this. Okay, do we have any comments from the boards? We have a plan in front of us, and it seems pretty innocuous to me, but it's just one opinion, so... Anybody have questions?
I don't have any questions.
Do you wanna see what you forgot to bring with you?
No, I saw it.
Okay.
I saw it on my phone.
How about down here? We got anything?
None.
Do we have any comments from the audience? Okay. Anyone wanna make a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve the petition.
It's applied for?
It is applied for.
Do we have a second?
I'm gonna second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Good luck.
And to you.
You can come back to April if you want. Actually, May's the one you may wanna stay away from.
It's gonna be a good time. Can't wait.
So, did you hear what she said before about the 20 days and...
It takes 14 days to do the paperwork, and it goes to the town clerk, and there's a 20-day appeal period. If there's no appeals, I'll contact you to come pick it up.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna do one quick thing out of order here. Let's approve our meeting minutes from February 15th.
Did Jeff do the Benati?
The what?
Benati.
Oh, yeah, I'll get to that in a second. Since I opened up six, we're jumping around here. Fortunately, Benati will take two seconds. So, who wants to approve the minutes if they've reviewed them for the 15th? Anybody reveal them?
I'm making a motion to approve the meeting, have minutes.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? I don't, were you here?
I was.
You weren't here? Okay, Jerry wasn't here. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, one. Okay. Benati hearing. Pretty sure everyone's gonna be able to predict this one at this point. So, Mr. Benati is still working at coming to a resolution with his neighbor and his ask for a continuance to our April 25th meeting. Anyone willing to make that motion?
I'm making a motion to continue.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Mr. Anderson, is that you?
Yep.
You sure you wanna get involved here?
I don't know.
You got here, you got here before seven, so you saw what happened, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, you can, why don't you sit in the front row or move it up a little bit, whatever you wanna do.
Weren't you in charge of crowd control?
I was.
So, for the record, Eric Anderson is, has submitted an application to the, or a letter of interest to the Board of Selectmen in regards to filling one of our open spots for an associate on this board. So, as we have always done historically, we invite you to come to a meeting. Normally, they're not as exciting, but you got a good one to start off with. So, they're normally, very rarely do they, are they that large. Honestly, I've been on the board for approaching 20 years now, and we've never had a situation where we've had that many people in the room.
Yeah, and I had to park across the street, I'm like, oh, boy.
Yeah. If you parked across, if you parked right across the street, you got here early enough. I think there were people who couldn't even find a parking spot, that type of a deal. So, yeah, I mean, we've had 40B projects in the past, and, you know, and that's, there's nothing wrong with it. We just, you know, we wanna hear what people have to say. I mean, that's part of the process, no matter what the petition is, whether it's 40B, whether it's someone who wants to extend their deck. You know, public comment is very important. It's part of the process, and it's the only way it really works, so... Although I know a lot of people weren't happy tonight, were upset. Yeah. We'll get through it. So, they're not all like that. But anybody have any questions, or do you have any questions for us, or...
No, I kinda got the gist of it through that, and, you know, it's pretty straightforward. That's what goes on, so...
Yeah, I mean, I, we're the board that's, you know, supposed to be reasonable. I'm not so sure everyone agrees with that right now, but, you know, people, something's coming in. It's the Board of Appeals. It doesn't fit in the square box, so we need to say, is it more detrimental? Does it benefit? We weigh that and figure out if we need to make the exception. I'm not gonna get into the detail of it now. We'll get into it at the next meeting. 40B, just for the record, is a completely different animal. We don't have the luxury of necessarily just saying thumbs up or thumbs down. The state is extremely involved in that, so...
Yeah, really, funding and all that sort of thing, so...
Uh, yeah, not so much funding.
And I, yeah, I get the gist of it.
Basically saying, "You guys need to do this, so..."
Yeah.
Jump on board, or we're gonna force it down your throat. So, we try to mitigate or do whatever we can to make it a little more palatable for the community, so...
What is our percentage required to have?
10. 10. 10% affordable. We're not there yet.
Five something.
Yeah.
Six, I think.
5.7, 5.6, something like that.
There's about 11,000 units in the left town.
Jerry's doing his homework.
So, if you want the job, you gotta read about 40B.
40B.
That's your homework assignment.
All right. All right.
I mean, we're very lucky. Amy Questle, who was here earlier, is town council, and Kathy's been doing this for a while, and she is, she's very good. She knows her stuff on 40B, so it's very nice to have her as a backup, because I would not wanna rely on knowing all the ins and outs of 40B myself. The Chris's? Any questions? You wanna grill this guy, or what?
Uh, no. I'd love to have you come on board.
Join in, join in. The water's warm, right?
What would you leave, though?
What would make you good for the ZBI?
I've kinda been, not to have too much, but I've been in construction my whole life, so I kinda see the ins and outs, you know, people wanting to build stuff, getting approved, you know, dealing with builders, and, you know, that sort of thing, you know, they're getting their projects approved, and this, that, and the other thing.
How long you been doing construction?
Well, I'm an electrician.
Oh.
So I've been, well, same field.
There you go.
Been an electrician for...
How long you been in the trades?
13 years.
Okay.
14 years. I've been doing it, you know, since I was little, my father, but I've been, you know, in and out of it my whole life, so...
Good.
I deal with a lot of builders and, you know, different projects, and they, I hear about their approval process they have to go through and that sort of thing, so kinda get a little in my ears and everything, listening, getting some knowledge, so...
Good.
Jeff, do you have a question?
No, I don't have any question. He's crazy enough to come join this board.
He's not his bedtime, he's ready to go.
But if you ever, if you ever read up on, I know 40Bs backwards. It's, it's a very complicated process...
Yeah.
To, let's put it this way, denying it is...
It's hard. Well, it's a little pressure.
Yeah, it's not hard, but it's, it's... It's gotta be very specific reasons. It really comes down to public health, safety, you know, that basically needs to come from someplace else. We can't just arbitrarily deny ourselves because we don't like it, even if we don't like it. It needs to come from someplace else. But when you come to the next 40B hearing, when that gets reopened or continued, Amy's gonna give us a little rundown, so everybody realizes what the parameters are we have to operate under.
Are we discussing a petition?
No. No, we're discussing 40B. It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter which 40B petition comes ahead of us. It's, it's unfortunately something...
We'll keep it generic.
That doesn't necessarily benefit the town all the time, which isn't so much of the time, but in any case, we have to work our way through it.
This is all on record right now.
Yeah, that's, like, see, this is the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah.
That's what our main function should be, but we get involved in other things.
Well, I don't have any other questions.
We're in the hole.
I do.
You rushed us.
Hey, we were expecting to be here a lot longer, so... If no one has anything else, and you don't have any questions for us, not that we're the appointing authority, but we usually make a recommendation, unless anybody wants to discuss it and bring, talk about it next meeting, or we could just make a motion right now to recommend Eric to...
The only thing I would caution is, do we wanna insert him into the process starting next month, and then into May?
Honestly, it would be a really good learning experience for him, because remember, he's gonna be an associate.
Right, so he's not gonna vote in.
So he's not gonna have to vote, and even if someone has to recuse themselves, Anthony gets to step up and get hit between the eyes, so...
I'm going to have, going to be recused in the next meeting or two, so do we have five?
Yes, we do. And we'll have six if they appoint him, so...
Okay.
Yeah. Honestly, being an associate, when I started on this board, that somebody convinced me I had a moment of weakness 18 years ago, I was an associate for a few years, and it's very beneficial. I mean, unless you're someone who's literally like Jeff, an engineer who's been doing this stuff his entire career, you can kinda jump right in, but it's, it's nice to kinda get your feet wet and kinda pay attention.
I have a question. Did you have a full head of hair 18 years ago?
I was born bald.
Well, yeah.
You like that answer, huh? Uh, you know what? I think I started cutting it real short, because I could see what was coming down the pipeline, so... But I don't know. We can check with LightCam, they may have... Jose, look and see if there's a, see if I have hair in it.
Dig up the archives.
So...
I did recommend Eric apply to the board, because I think that he does have positive bring to the table. I think he's a smart guy, especially in our trades, and I hope that he can help us maybe, you know, make better decisions.
We can use all the help we can get, according to what we heard tonight, so... Having said that, just because you recommended him doesn't mean you can't motion that we recommend him to the select board.
I will make a motion to recommend the select board to possibly add him to the team.
To add him to the team?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion to recommend Eric as the zoning board's recommendation for, to fill the associate position. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Cross your fingers. It's a big line of people lining up to do what you wanna do, so hopefully they appoint you. Okay. Do we have any other business to come before the board tonight?
No.
Nope. You guys don't wanna come up and beat us up?
You just wanna stick around and enjoy the fun?
All right.
We have nothing to do.
Well, no comment. No comment. I'm not gonna, I already got enough people upset at me tonight, so...
I think I might have an open-up guess.
Thanks.
We could appoint her if you wanted.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Having nothing else to come before us tonight, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned at 8:31 p.m.